Hi, the board on our agenda. The announcement of previous executive sessions of the Board of Directors. On June 18th, we had a session for 45 minutes. The topic was personnel. On June 24th, we had a session of 120 minutes. That topic was personnel. On July 1st, we had a session for 150 minutes and the topic was personnel. And on July 10th, we had a session for 270 minutes and that topic was personnel. The next item on our agenda is public comment period number one. No one has signed up for that period. Moving along, we're at item six. Item six is the superintendent search update, which I have provided you with every meeting. And I'm very pleased to announce that we have come to an agreement with Dr. Richard Bailey on the terms and conditions of his contract. We will be appointing him at a special board meeting next Tuesday night at 7:00 here in this room. And we are privileged to have Dr. Bailey with us here this evening. And I would like to introduce him to those of you that are here, Dr. Bailey. And if you'd like to say a few words to us, we'd be pleased.
Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to come to the Boyer Town Area School District and join a team that will focus on students. My wife and daughter made the trip down with me this evening. My nine-year-old daughter's a little shy, so she's in another room right now. But we're very, very excited about coming to the district. In fact, we made a phone call today to start looking for residents in the community in the school district. So we're looking forward to doing that next week, meeting all of the wonderful people in the school district, staff, teachers, students, and members of the community. It will be an exciting time. We will build upon all of the wonderful things that have been done here in Boyertown. We'll work as a team, we'll collaborate, and we'll communicate effectively. Thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to the transition and to getting to know all of you better. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. We all look forward to next Tuesday night. All right. The next item on our agenda is approval of our minutes for our public meeting of June 18th. Dr. Christman? Or for seconds? Are there any questions or additions to those minutes? Comments about the minutes? Seeing none, we'll vote on approval of the minutes.
Dr. Christman?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroe?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Beat zero.
The next item on our agenda is the secretary's report.
No report.
Following that, we have a solicitor's report.
Oh, there's no report this evening.
Okay. Following that, the financial report.
Good evening. Tonight, we'll be looking at the treasurer's report for the month of June. And the first thing I would like to point out, that on your report, it does say preliminary, this is the end of our fiscal year, and so we are continuing to do accruals that will be happening in July and August that actually apply to the previous school year. So this will be changing, but this is the best information we had as of last Friday when I had to have this complete for your board packets. So if you please turn to the pages with the revenues and expenditures. I'll just point at a few highlights. In the month of June, we received approximately $1.7 million in local revenues, and the majority of that was our earned income. We received $608,000 for the month of May. That was received in June. And I also accrued $453,000 for the month of June that we have already received in July. So we received more than $1 million in earned income. In May, we also had $173,000 that was collected by E&amp;M for our delinquent real estate taxes, as well as $47,000 in July that applied to June, plus $103,000 that we collect in our office. So that's over $220,000 in delinquent real estate taxes. For state revenues, we had approximately $3.5 million. And that represents mostly retirement subsidy. We did receive a retirement subsidy payment in the month of June that was for the quarter that was January through March, and that was $1.1 million. And additionally, I accrued nearly $1 million for the summer pays for the teachers and also the last quarter of the year. So that's $2.1 million in retirement subsidy. We also received $640,000 in transportation subsidy. And for the federal, you see $340,000. We received $260,000 in access revenue, and the remainder of that was Title I and Title II. And if you look at your expenditures, you'll see that, as always, salaries and benefits are the highest portion. They're much higher than usual, and that does include those teacher summer pays. They received four pays in July and August, but those are for the 2012 and 2013 school year. So those are applied there. We did have, the results currently look very good for the year 2012-13, and I'm sure Mr. Zabrowski's been keeping you updated on that on all the financial committee and budget meetings that he's presented. Following this is the regular list of bills and budget transfers. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pitts. Mrs. Hartford? Do I have someone who would, Hartford knows? Okay, thank you.
Christian, second.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any questions about the treasurer's report for Mrs. Pitts at this time? Mr. Elsier?
Thank you. I have a question. It's concerning technology, one of the transfers, and I don't think I see Scott Major here, but I'm wondering if somebody could answer. The transfer on page 605, $58,000 telecommunications account to the educational software license. It talks about a pilot program in the library scheduled to begin in August 2013, and interactive projectors. I'm just trying to get a little more clarity on what that pilot program is.
I'll have to get the answer for you. Mr. Major not here, and I don't know exactly what the details of the program are.
Okay. And then, if you could also, at the same time, on the next page, $9,000 on page 0606, talking about terminals for a pilot program to assess viability of a new technology. I'm just curious what the new technology is.
I think if you refer back to your notes as far as Mr. Major's comments during the budget process, and I did notice that the thin client, which is 605, that was one where we're not using as robust a computer, and we're logging onto the virtual network so that we have access to all the applications without having the basic guts in the computer. So we're giving those computers a very good price, but yet they're being fully utilized as regular PC, standalone PCs.
So it's web-based program as opposed to on the hard drive?
Correct. That's right. It just took me a minute to get that acclimated there. As far as the, I think that 606 has to do with the upgrading of the educational channel at the junior high. I don't know, Mr. Trukaski knows anything about the junior high east? It says, yeah, requirement for additional networking supplies as part of the network upgrade project at both junior highs, and transitioned the plans in another direction where we no longer needed those items, providing cable and internet coverage of graduation. Encurred the need for services that we would need to provide for our staff. But it sounds like it has something to do with the broadcast of the graduation.
I think I know what it's about, if you would like me to briefly say.
Okay, Mr. Elsier?
Yes, of course. What Steve has been working on, and I've been working with him, is the coax in the entire district and most of the buildings that feeds the televisions has just been becoming obsolete. So he's working on a system that will send television district-wide over the internet via PIG, and that would originate at the high school, but ultimately, it will send out to the entire districts, all the buildings, so that teachers could access television channels to send to their projector through their computers, and it would replace all the televisions in the classroom. So it's a pretty major project that he's been working on.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I'm a fan of technology, just trying to understand, $58,000, it's just where it goes and what it is. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll take a vote on the treasurer's report.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroe?
No.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Christman?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Seven-one, motion passes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our superintendent's report. And for those of you who haven't had the opportunity to be introduced to Mr. Miles, this is Mr. Miles, our acting superintendent. This is his first meeting with us to share the superintendent's report with us.
Thank you. I beg your indulgence and patience. Every district does things a little bit differently, but I learn fast, I'll catch on. That being said, we have 16 items on the superintendent's report this evening. Item number one, the heading of High Performing Schools Update. Originally, there was to be a presentation this evening regarding the senior high school renovation and expansion project. That presentation has been postponed until Tuesday, July 23rd, that's next Tuesday, during the facilities committee meeting. Items two, three, and four are settlement agreements, confidential settlement agreements, and the recommendation is that the Board of School Directors approves the confidential settlement agreement with the parents for the provision of special education services. Crosley moves.
Questions or comments?
Is that for items two, three, four?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Seeing no questions, we'll have a roll call vote on items two, three, and four settlement agreements.
Mrs. Deroe?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Christman?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Beat zero. Three motions passes.
Item number five. Item number five is a request for approval of investment institutions. And each year, the business office invests district funds in most attractive and approved investment options. The list is on the agenda or on the report, and the recommendation is that the Board of School Directors approves the list of investment institutions as presented to provide investment instruments to the school district for the 2013-2014 fiscal year.
Hartford, minutes. Mrs. Deroe, seconds. Questions or comments about the approval of the investment institutions? Mrs. Deroe, and then Mr. Crosley.
I just had a quick question. With interest rates going up for borrowers, are we getting more interest for our money or haven't you invested any?
Well, money is starting to come in. Tax bills went out July 1st, so we are starting to get some early payers in. So we are, that's why we get this action item approved each July, so that as the money comes in, we can take it to the most aggressive banks that'll give us the best interest rates. But you are right, they are slowly, very slowly creeping up, and we hope to improve on our interest earnings this year. You're welcome.
My question is, is there any risk with any of these institutions?
We have used all these institutions in the past at certain times. They are either FDIC insured or fully collateralized to comply with PD school code requirements. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, then we'll take a vote on the approval of the investment institutions.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Christman?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroe?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Beat zero.
Item number six.
Item number six is the district envelope bid award. And the following is a low bid for the district envelopes for the year 2013-14 school year that must be board-approved. That's Paper Mart Incorporated, and the cost is $3,687.15. And the recommendation is that the School Board of Directors approves the award of the above-stated bid for the upcoming school year.
Mrs. Deroe, moves.
Crosley, second.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Deroe?
Sorry to keep asking so many questions. Do you know how many envelopes we're getting, and has the number of envelopes that we bid on decreased because we're using more technology every day?
Absolutely, it has decreased over the years. I couldn't give you the exact number, there's so many different varieties we have.
Why have you decreased 20% over the past? About?
About, over the last, I'd say over the last five years, it's decreased at least 25%.
What, or you're off 51%?
Okay. We hardly use any for payroll anymore, since we do electronic email notifications and direct deposit. More and more of our vendors are taking their payments, EFT. So we've been trying to reduce the envelope usage, which in turn reduces our postage usage also.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Take a roll call vote on the district envelope.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Christman?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroe?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Beat zero.
Item number seven is concerned with authorization to bid for student district van. The Transportation Department has identified the need for a replacement of the district's van for student transportation that is needed, and funds were budgeted for the replacement of the existing van with a specified nine-passenger van. And the recommendation is that the Board of School Directors authorizes the administration to solicit bids for a nine-passenger student van as specified by the Transportation Department.
Christman, means. Crosley, second.
Okay, any comments or questions about the van? And then we'll take a roll call vote on the authorization to bid for the student van.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Christman?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroe?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Beat zero.
Item number eight regards the commitment of fund balance for future retirement liability. The administration recommends that the Board commit $1.6 million of the general fund balance for the purpose of funding the future expense of retirement contributions effective for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013. So the recommendation is that the Board of Directors authorizes and approves the addition of $1.6 million of the general fund balance to a committed fund balance status effective June 30th, 2013, for the purpose of offsetting future contributions into the Pennsylvania school employee retirement system.
Elsier, second.
Questions or comments on this item? Mr. Nichols?
Yes. Including that 1.6, what would our reserve mean then?
Well, the year's not closed, so I assume you're referring to the unreserved, uncommitted balance. We usually wait a few, another month or so till we decide exactly how much we're going to have. Probably in August, if we have, if the year comes off as good as it has been, we're probably going to ask the Board to transfer some funds to capital projects, but it'll be hovering right around that even percent that we're limited to. Thank you.
Mr. Elsier?
Dave, I just want to make sure, this is an increase in what we were planning to commit to, correct?
Yes, the actual budgeted was $1.4 million, which will take us to an even $6 million, but we did a really nice job of handling our expenditures this year, saving some money on payroll, especially in the administrative level. So we thought we'd put a few extra $100,000 into that committed, because we're definitely going to need it in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Savage?
On that note, just to acknowledge the good financial stewardship of everybody in the district who allowed us to put away even more than we had planned. So thanks to everyone.
Seeing no other comments, we'll have a roll call vote on this item.
Mrs. Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Christman?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroe?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Beat zero.
I remember, hasn't known it done talking. It turns itself on. Okay. I'm learning.
Item number nine is the Boyertown YMCA before and after-school program for the 2013-14 school year. The YMCA is proposing a continuation of the program that it had offered last year, and it's expanding to pick up before-school and after-school programs. The recommendation is that the Board of School Directors approve the contract with Boyertown YMCA to operate a before-and-after-school childcare program at Boyertown, Gilbertsville, New Hanover, Upper Frederick, and Washington Elementary Schools for the 2013-2014 school year at an annual revenue of $50,400.
Elsier, moves. Christman, second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Crosley, then Mrs. Deroe?
I see that it's the same rate as we charged last year, but our expenses for the buildings have been going up. Should we be adjusting this for the future?
We meet every year with the Boyertown YMCA, and we talk about this. They're having some difficult time, as the economic situation is the way it is. They have been looking to expand to a couple of our other schools, which would have meant that they would have paid more. They asked us to hold the line on the cost again for this year, which is what we're recommending. I would like to point out, though, that they have, these programs are very well-received by the public, and indirectly, we believe they do save us more money because they are taking some of the onus of the transportation off of the district and putting it on the parents, so we don't have as many overcrowded buses to transport those children to and from school every day, because the parents are doing it because of the before and after school daycare. So that's the reason we're asking that the price remain the same for this year.
Because of all those things, I guess it's difficult to determine if we're covering our expenses.
It is, and it's really not, it's not costing us anymore as far as custodial time, because we just changed the schedules at those four buildings. From a utility standpoint, we have been getting a very good deal as far as buying our electric and our gas. So I don't know that our costs have been going up quite as much as they had been in the past, which is another reason to support maintaining the same price. Thank you.
Mrs. Deroe?
I think, in fact, this is the third year we're keeping the price the same, not just last year. And there's nothing in here, don't they have summer programs? There's nothing in here about the cost of the summer program.
Well, the summer programs is completely different. They go through the building rental process for the limited amount they use our junior high west in Boyertown for their summer program.
Okay, so if we didn't up their rates, I'm assuming they didn't up the rates to our parents that use this facilities?
I'm not quite sure what they did to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes, I'm just curious, I mean, from where I sit, the YMCA's been a great partner. I'm just curious, how many years have we partnered with them to provide after-school programs? And do you know offhand how many years we've been doing this?
Well, the after-school programs have grown the last three years. I think they were at Gilbertsville, starting in the year 2000, and then they expanded to one other school. Do you remember, Dr. Christman?
They were really in Boyertown.
They were first? Okay.
And then they moved to Gilbertsville, and Washington, and Manhattan.
So it's grown quite a bit after, over the last three years, but we've been partners with them because they host our Boyertown swim team at the YMCA for meets and practices at no cost to us. So it has been a very good partnership over the years.
Yeah, I just, so it's been at least 13 years, it sounds like, that we've been partnering with them, maybe longer, to provide extra programs for the young children and maybe help out parents that are working or whatever.
Yeah, it's been at least that long.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote on the Boyertown YMCA for our new school programs.
Dr. Christman?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Deroe?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Beat zero.
Item 10 is the authorization to proceed with the owner-controlled insurance program, OCIP, for the high school construction. The administration has recommended to the Facilities Committee that the district utilize a Pennsylvania School Board Association-sponsored owner-controlled insurance program for the bidding process of the renovation and addition project at Boyertown Area Senior High School. The recommendation is that the Board of School Directors authorizes the inclusion of the owner-controlled insurance program in the bidding documents for the construction project at the Boyertown Area Senior High School. The district is electing the direct method of coverage, assuring an insurance rate not to exceed 25.086 per thousand on the bid amounts. $25.09 around that old.
Savage, please.
Christian, second.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Savage?
Yes, I think that's fair, Mr. Zabrowski. I know you followed up with some of the schools who have used this program, and you provided us some feedback, and I think you were going to send this back today. I don't know if I missed it, because I left home, but was there anything further?
Yes, there were. Sorry, I was a little tied up with a couple of projects today. I did get three voicemails from the three business managers I missed last week. If you'd like to listen to them, they're still on my machine. They were very positive. They endorsed the program wholeheartedly. Most of the school districts I talked to have used the OSIP program more than once. They did start with the quote program, which proved that they did save some money, so each subsequent project has been done under the direct method to save even more money. So they said not only the savings of the program, but the way the program is administered and the safety, the safety officer that is on-site weekly or bi-weekly, they just did not have enough good things to say about that, and how easy they made it to, and safe, how their projects. Actually, I talked to one business manager that experienced a fatality on one of their constructions, and he said it was horrible, and that he wouldn't wish that on anybody, but that it went as well as could be expected under the OSIP program. There was one other lady that got back to me that, three days before school opened, they had a claim for $400,000. And they said that within two weeks, they had the whole thing settled, there were no finger pointing, they just paid it, and things were resolved. So very strong references.
Thank you so much for calling up.
You're welcome.
Mr. Crosley?
You mentioned about the safety aspect. Our construction will be going on while the students are in school. Will he be addressing that safety aspect also?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mrs. Deroe?
We have a representative that drove all the way here. It'd be a shame not to have him say a few words.
Mr. Myers, would you like to address the score?
Mr. Myler, would you like to address the score?
I think from, Chris had a few moments here. I think from the references, I think from the references they've got that it's a proven program throughout the state. The districts that try repeatedly use the program, it's been proven to save them money in their construction costs. And to Dave's point, there's some significant claims scenarios where having the safety people involved that are used to dealing with construction, construction issues and claims, that their presence in those scenarios is invaluable. Not just the ones on the project, but some claims specialists we have in-house and at the PSBA School Claim Services. I'm sure you'll enjoy the program.
Thank you. Mrs. Hartford?
Yes, I have a clarification. Under the information, the last sentence says the price per thousand for coverage does not exceed the 25.09 and may be reduced based on the total proposed projects as identified in September and submitted to PD under Plan Con Parts A and B. So would this cover all of the projects, the four phases of projects that we originally submitted to Plan Con at this rate?
That is the plan. We're trying to get the economies of scale to promise the insurance company that for this project and the next three proposed, that we would use the OSIP program in order to get a more attractive rate.
Okay, so then in the recommendation, it's just referring to we would be utilizing this in bid documents for the construction process project at the high school. So this particular recommendation is just to authorize us to allow this to be included in our bid documents for just the high school project, but yet the information to us is saying that it's, we would be looking at it under all four of the projects out there?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nichols?
I wonder if the employers who will be working on this project, are their employees given a criminal background check? We require that?
That is a requirement for them to come onto our campus. They have to have their proper clearances.
I would, when we get a copy of that?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Crosley then Mrs. Dera?
I heard you mention that we were going to use them for the next three projects. I don't see that in this motion. Our motion today is only for the one project, is that right?
That's the only project that's really progressing right now. I only put the information piece in there about the other projects so that Liberty Mutual, who's the underwriter, Mr. Myler can go back to them and said, "Our intent is to use the OSIP program for those four when the time comes."
So it is the intent, our motion tonight is just on the one commitment, is just for the high school?
Okay, thanks.
It says $25.09 per thousand of the bid amount. Is that the total 55 million or including the soft cost or is that just?
It would just be on the bid amount.
So it'd be like on the 44?
Yeah, 45, so 25 times 45 would be our cost for. Was it 1.2? You made me get my calculator out. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any other comments? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote on the approval of the owner controlled insurance program in the bidding documents for the high school.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dera?
You all know I'm going to vote no, not because of the program, I think it's excellent, but because I'm voting no on the entire project. Thank you.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
I don't support the project either, but I feel that if it goes through, we're going to need to have this coverage, so I'm going to support it.
Yes. Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Seven one, motion passes.
Item number 11 is the approval of Amendment Number One to the collective bargaining agreement between the Board of School Directors and the Boyertown Area School District and Boyertown Area Education Association. The purpose of this amendment is to provide a replacement co-curricular salary schedule that clarifies and replaces the original co-curricular salary schedule. In all other respects, the original collective bargaining agreement shall remain in force and effect. The recommendation is that the Board of School Directors approves Amendment Number One dated July 16, 2013, to the collective bargaining agreement between the Board of School Directors and the Boyertown Area School District and the Boyertown Area Education Association.
Mrs. Dera, move. Hartford seconds. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll take a vote.
Mrs. Dera?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Eight zero.
Item number 12 is the appointment of consulting physicians to provide necessary physicals. Annually, the Board of School Directors approves the appointment of a consulting physician to provide school physicals. Commonwealth Orthopedic Association has agreed to provide that service at the cost of $30 per exam, and these services will be offered to students in kindergarten, sixth and 11th grades. The recommendation is that the Board of School Directors approves the contract with Commonwealth Orthopedic Associates to provide school physicals for the 2013-2014 school year.
Mr. Nichols?
Elsier second.
Questions or comments? Take a roll call vote.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dera?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Eight zero.
Item 13 is the appointment of consulting physicians to review standing orders. Annually, the Board of School Directors approves the appointment of a consulting physician. Commonwealth Orthopedic Associates has agreed to provide standing orders at the cost of $6,000. The recommendation is that the Board of School Directors approves the contract with Commonwealth Orthopedic Association, or excuse me, Associates for authorization of standing orders.
Hartford moves.
Elsier second.
Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a vote.
I have a question. I'm sorry. He doesn't raise his hand. I have a question. Do we check with anybody locally? Commonwealth Orthopedic, I believe, is out of running. Don't we have anybody locally that provides a service or that could provide it? Do we check with them as a course to prohibit it? What's their story?
In years past, we did have some local physicians that would complete this service. Two years ago, the last of those physicians declined to, could no longer provide them. Working with the school nurses who are familiar with the doctors in the area, we tried at that time to solicit any local physicians that would be interested. Were not able to find any. We did approach Commonwealth because we had done some previous work with them and they were agreeable to provide this service for us. We used it last year. The nurses and principals, you know, things were very smooth. They provided the coverage, consultation when we needed it for difficult cases and allowed the nurses to provide the day-to-day, you know, first aid and care for the students, knowing that they had a physician behind them.
Okay, there are no further questions. We'll vote on this item.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dera?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Eight zero.
Item 14 is the appointment of consulting physicians to provide coverage for athletics and athletic training. Boyertown School District provides physician coverage at Boyertown Area High School varsity football games played at Memorial Stadium and medical supervision for work completed by Boyertown Area School District athletic trainers. The recommendation is that the Board of School Directors approves the contract with Commonwealth Orthopedic Associates to provide coverage for athletics and athletic training for the 2013-2014 school year at a cost of $2,500.
Elsier moves.
Crosley seconds. Questions or comments? Okay, we'll take a vote on this item.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dera?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Eight zero.
Item 15 is the approval of Bridges Virtual Education Services Agreement. The Boyertown School District would like to continue to partner with the Bridges Virtual Education Services to provide virtual course offerings and virtual program consulting services from July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014. The recommendation is, is that the Board of School Directors approves the service agreement dated July 1, 2013, and Bridges Virtual Education Services in the amount of $10,875 plus student enrollment and licensing fees.
Dera seconds. Questions or comments? Mr. Elsier?
Yes, two questions. One, this fee is significantly lower than last year's, correct? Like half, if I remember.
Ms. Witter, could you fill us in on that?
For the 1213 school year, the fee was just over $32,000, so we had hoped to be able to reduce that by 50%. When working with Mr. Harrington, he was able to give us the $10,875 fee. And that's because he's been working with us throughout the past year, and we also have Becca Hart servicing as the cyber coordinator, so she's taking on that responsibility. But we just feel as though we still need a little bit of support if we encounter some situations when necessary.
And a follow-up question. It says here that they also provide support in marketing and promotion. I'm just trying to understand what that looks like.
Well, with that, Mr. Harrington helps to suggest to us when we should be working with our families who are receiving outside cyber charter schools and how we can go about getting them, speaking with them, talking to them. So he's been helping us to promote within that realm. In addition to that, we had some informational nights. We had one in April and a representative from Bridges Virtual had come down and helped us as well to discuss some information about the Bridges programs and courses themselves for any of the secondary students who would be enrolling in the BASD cyber and using Bridges courses as opposed to our courses because we may not have them developed at that point in time. So we do rely on some of their expertise and information and how to go about reaching people that are kind of beyond our BASD in-house folks right now.
Okay, so what I heard you say is they provide not only consulting, but they're physically there doing some of the marketing, promoting, talking about the courses.
Yes, they have been present at some of our informational nights and will continue to do so as necessary.
Thank you.
Mr. Crosley?
I need more information. It says plus student enrollment and licensing fees. What are we talking about there?
Each of the BASD secondary courses costs $400 per student to enroll in the course. So hence the reason why we're trying to build up our library of our own courses so that we don't have to pay Bridges $400 for each student, each course. But at this present time, that's what we need to do.
What are we talking about average? What's that cost us last year?
How many secondary kids do we have enrolled? Times the number of courses, times 400, so. I don't know exactly. I mean.
Approximately 15 secondary students, approximately. Now, we have fluctuation in and out of the year, so that's what makes it hard, but about 15 secondary students. Times a full load of six courses, times 400, it's roughly $2,400 per student.
All right, thank you.
Mrs. Hartford?
Mr. Crosley asked my question, thank you.
Mrs. Dera?
I don't think you mentioned the licensing fees. How much are they?
That I'm not, I'm only aware of the $400 per course, per student, so that's also incorporated in that.
I think that's included in the 400.
What is?
Yes.
If there are no further questions, we'll vote on this item.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dera?
Yes.
Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Eight zero.
Item 16 is personnel activity, and the recommendation is that the Board of School Directors approves, ratifies personnel, the personnel items that are presented.
Mr. Crosley moves. Questions or comments? Seeing none, take a roll call vote.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Crosley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dera? Mr. Elsier?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hartford? Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mrs. You Savage?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons?
Yes.
Seven one, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Good job. All right, moving on. Number 12 is all business.
No all business.
13, Board Representative Reports and Board Committee Reports. Do we have any? Mrs. You Savage?
I'm not sure if this qualifies as a Board Representative Report or a comment. It's about the Ad-Hoc Region Committee.
Okay.
So follow-up from the last board meeting where Mr. Nichols asked about the next steps regarding the recommendation from the Ad-Hoc Committee for the voting regions, and the Board expressed interest in refiling the petition. I just wanted to remind everybody about the history here and make us all aware of the most recent activity in this regard. So starting at the beginning, in 2011, the Board commissioned an Ad-Hoc Committee to look at equalizing the population of the voting regions using the census data, which was required per school code. And it was noted that Region 3 had been growing much faster than other regions. The recommendation of that committee, supported by two of the three of those members, was to keep the regions the same. The school board rejected that proposal, which ironically meant that we kept the regions the same. In 2012, then, the Board commissioned another Ad-Hoc Committee, this time with a broader scope, both to look at equalizing the regions as before and also to consider the various voting models allowed per the Pennsylvania School Code, which are several kinds of regional, three-region, nine-region, or at-large, or hybrid. The committee worked from September to December with a great focus on community input. Based on a lot of research and a lot of community input, the resulting recommendation was twofold: to equalize the regions by moving the most rural voting precinct of Douglas Township in Montgomery County to Region 1, and to change to a hybrid voting model, retaining six regional representatives, two elected from each region, and adding three representatives elected from the school district at large. This recommendation was approved by the Board in December 2012 by a vote of six to one. It was very favorable to a lot of people in the community because every person in the entire district now has some vote in a majority of the school board members. The next step was then to petition the Berks County Court of Common Pleas to approve this recommendation. recommendation, and that was scheduled by the court in February. That process became a little more, a lot more complicated and costly because two people chose to intervene at this point. These people that chose to fight in court chose to do so rather than participate in the public meetings intended to gather the public sentiment on the topic. They chose to gather signatures on a slanted petition rather than encourage people to participate in our public meetings to avoid an informed opinion on the topic. The result of the Court of Common Pleas was that the judge denied our request on the grounds that the lead time to put this in place for the 2013 election was too short. However, he expressly stated that the ruling was without prejudice toward refiling for implementation starting in 2015. And at the last board meeting, a majority of the board members expressed comments supportive of refiling that petition. What has come to my attention is that the interveners are now asking municipalities in our school district to pass resolutions calling for no change to the voting regions or the voting model. I am concerned that the municipal officials are not being given all of the information required to make an informed decision. So I'm asking board members and community members that if you are aware of such activity in your municipality, please encourage your elected officials to seek out more information. The agendas and minutes and the final presentation from the Ad-Hoc Committee will be posted on the district website shortly under the School Board Committee's page. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Donna, I think that's no Hattler, not Douglas, Montgomery that we're moving. It's no Hattler, is it?
No.
Is it Douglas? Okay.
Is this a committee report?
Pardon?
Is this a committee report?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You'll have to...
I should be on the board.
Yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Hartford?
Just a finance committee update is that we have, at our last meeting, we're now looking at five-year projections. We've moved from three years to five years in looking at our finances moving out, and all the board members are looking at different scenarios, variables, assumptions, as far as going forward. Just wanted to let everyone know that we're not using a small, er, like timeframe. We're trying to manage at least five years out and what we're going to try and look at, what would happen with our taxpayers and what our mill rates would go to by looking at all the variables that we have going into a budget. So I wanted to let you know that this board is being a very good steward of everyone's dollars.
Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move to item 14, which is board comments. Mr. Nichols?
First thing, under Office of Teaching and Learning, we have somebody going to a Wilson Language Training for two days, and the room bill is $683.68. I'd like to...some explanation on that.
I believe between myself and Mrs. Woodard, we can share some information. What is...just a little background on that program. That's a highly specific reading intervention program that we use for a small amount of students with IEPs who also have very significant reading disabilities. So the training opportunities are much more limited than in some of the other programs. So we are appreciative that we do have a teacher, at least one per school, that maintains this training so that we can continue to offer this and be successful with some of our more challenging IEPs. We were aware of the high cost, and I know Mrs. Woodard and I have had some discussions. This is actually the second option that we brought forward with it, and if that's okay, Mrs. Woodard, would you add to that where we are with the cost and what we explored?
Certainly. Well, initially, I believe if I'm correct, the training is occurring in New York City, and so the first request to attend a meeting, the teacher had asked for a specific hotel, and we looked at the amounts, and it was rather high. She had actually offered herself not to pay for...well, she herself would pay for the transportation, the meals and such, if we would just take care of lodging and obviously the registration. But we discussed this and asked her if we could reexamine the different opportunities, nearby hotels. Initially, she was looking for the one that...where the actual conference was held in the training. So she expanded her horizon a little bit, and with that, though, we had to agree to pay for the taxi cab fares and such that she would incur in the city transportation to get her there and such. So we were able to save a couple of hundred dollars, but we did examine several different alternatives in order to find the most cost-efficient manner.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I attended the Culverdale Township meeting last night. We had a discussion again about the redistricting, and these folks that are presenting opposition to this are trying to play Montgomery County against Berks County, that we're going to all be...all board members are going to be from Montgomery County, that the people in Region 1, that this goes through, won't have a representative, things like that. One comment that was made was that, look at Upper Park, that they have one region in Berks County, Hartford Township. Do you think they'll ever have a board member there? Well, it just so happens my brother-in-law was a board member there for Upper Park. Amazing. But anyway, it's...I don't know whether they want to also divide the students or what they want to do, but what we should be doing here is we should be moving forward. The census report told us to do this, and I hope that people will realize that we're not Montgomery County, we're in Berks County, we're in the Boyertown School District. Thank you.
Mrs. Deroe?
At the last meeting, Mr. Zabrowski said he was going to send us the program in Excel for the five-year projection. I didn't get mine yet, and I got an email saying to call the Chair of Finance. I would like to have what I was supposed to get from Mr. Zabrowski. And if not, why?
As the Finance Chair at the finance meeting, I believe you said that all the assumptions and all the variables were to be sent to me, and that I would be meeting with Dave and providing those to him to input, which you received all of that information this evening of all the board members who provided variables on a five-year projection. And that was what was decided at the finance committee meeting.
I believe Mr. Zabrowski made the statement we would all get, all the board members would get that program.
And I believe the Finance Chair stated that was not going to happen, that we were going to...
Do you have the program, Barbara?
No, I do not. I came into Mr. Zabrowski's office and provided him with all your variables yesterday.
But if he wanted to send it to us, why can't we have it? What's the big deal about the board members having that program that he said he was going to send to us?
I personally, as the Finance Chair, decided that was not...we weren't going to do that because we would have...
We're a team of nine, Barbara, ten, actually.
Okay. Nine people with nine different variables, working on a spreadsheet to do anything they want to do with, would not provide a legitimate financial plan. Mr. Zabrowski heads up the business office. He provides all of our finances, all right? Therefore, I ask everyone to submit their variables or their assumptions. They went in through the program that he utilizes, not for us to manipulate, to play around with, or do anything else. Those who provided this evening to all of us, for those who submitted their assumptions, and they're on a PDF, and if you want to take that, you can blow it up, I can send the PDF to you.
Once again, we're a team of 10. The business manager says he's going to give us something. What right do you have as a Chair of Finance to tell me I cannot have it? It's nothing I ask him to make, to spend any time on, he already has it. I don't understand what the big deal was.
Because we decided that that was not what we were going to do at the finance committee meeting, and that was stated.
I remember Ruth's statement, that she was not speaking for me because I don't want it. I'm depending on the business manager to do the job, and I'm not here to, what I want to say, pick it apart. So I think the five-year plan is a good plan. I think we have a good business manager doing a good job, and if he wants to get that information, that's okay, but I don't want it. I don't need it.
Are there any other board members wishing to comment on anything this evening? Mrs. Hartford?
Yes, since we're a team of 10, I would like all the board members here, if you would like the PDF sent to you so you can blow up the five-year projections, we can request Mr. Zabrowski to just send the PDF if everyone's in agreement. Sure, has everybody...is there anybody in opposition to that, maybe I should say? Okay, fine. Mr. Zabrowski, if you would send the PDF to all board members, please.
Mr. Crossley?
Can I cancel my request? Except for...
Yes, John, I think you can. All right, if there are no further comments, we'll move to item 15, which is public comment period number two. Thank you, Mr. Ketch. We have two people signed up. First is Ruth Baker to talk about elections and PHMC.
First of all, if I could give Mr. Zabrowski a letter requesting the package of information that EI had given to PHMC, which caused them to send a letter back saying that our old building was not worthy of being on National Register status. Secondly, I'm sorry I could not come last month to your meeting. I must go back to work after this, this evening. I have Earl Township's resolution regarding what Mrs. Yousavage had been discussing about the hybrid at-large regional elections and the shift of the precinct. I would also, if I may, like to mention a few things to clarify the record of what was just stated. Number one, it was not a lack of interest in attending those committee meetings. I could give you chapter and verse why I could not attend them, that is why I don't show up at more of your meetings normally. Number two, in the court testimony, it was stated that it was acknowledged that there was really nominal research done on the hybrid at-large model in any quantitative sense. I gave the Board's members the tables that I had prepared, which included all the population data, which shows that it is a very minor percentage difference between the regions that necessitates, in your eyes as the board majority, this change. I also showed what happens in other districts who are at-large, that the most populous and/or the most well-to-do municipalities field the majority of the board, almost without exception. Also, the districts of our size, which is almost 100 square miles, uniformly in Berks County do not have at-large seats at all. So I don't know what you are hearing, but this is what Earl Township did, and I'd like to present this to the board members so they can see explicitly what my municipality, their supervisors feel, for starters. Thank you. that petition was signed by over 600 registered voters of this school district. Compare that to the very small attendance at even the largest of the committee meetings held to discuss this matter, and finally, may I note that if it weren't for the Reading Eagle, who gave good coverage of what happened, there would be no idea amongst residents that that was coming down. When I did petitioning in Montgomery County, there was not a single person there, except for Linda Curry, who had gone to all the meetings, who knew what was going on about this, including former board members and politicians. And likewise, in much of Berks County, if they didn't take the Eagle, they didn't know what was happening. The Mercury didn't cover it, the Boyertown Times didn't cover it. So with all due respect, I think that what was stated is not quite correct. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person wishing to speak to the Board is Brian Gilbert to talk about the girls' golf coach at the high school.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if there was any progress. I was not at the last meeting when the subject was brought up. I did have a conversation with Dr. Sciboria today, and I'll know if you've received any other information after we talked.
Sure. We're continuing to work on this, and we do think we'll have an update to share with the Board in this Friday's newsletter. We just received some information late this afternoon. I haven't had a chance to review it, Mr. Ketch and I, but we will be sharing that with the Board, and certainly we're hopeful that that will provide them with, you know, the questions and some of the information that came up at the previous meeting.
Okay. I just want the Board to be aware that their season starts August the 12th, if you hadn't been aware. The golf season begins the 12th, so I didn't know if there are personnel decisions that are made between board meetings? That this can be accomplished if it goes in that direction?
Oftentimes, if you look at our agenda and look at personnel items, it will say ratified, which means...or what's that wording? Means that it may have already approved and ratified personnel items. So sometimes someone may have been appointed and started, and then we would approve, just because of the timing of the meetings. So that is a possibility.
There's approximately 15 girls now that are going to be coming out this year for the team, which is by far the biggest turnout that we've had in the three years they've had the team. And I guess just my frustration, and the reason I'm here, is that I brought this subject matter up to the Athletic Director and the Principal back in October and November, and until I actually approached the board member, we didn't really get any movement on that. So I appreciate your efforts now to try to pull this together at the last minute, and hopefully that the girls will have some type of a coach there for their season, when the season starts. Yeah, we had...that's a good question. We had three teams and we had one coach. We had the boys varsity, boys JV, and the girls. So the girls are now having their own league this year in the Pac-10. They're forming...there's enough teams now that have girls, so they're putting together their own league for the first time. So there's going to be several teams fielding girls' teams in the Pac-10 for the first year, this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda would be announcements of upcoming meetings.
Pardon me?
Yes, Mr. Crossley?
I didn't get a chance to sign up for public comments, but I'd like to make a comment right now.
Because of you, Mr. Crossley, I'll permit it.
Well, I'll speak softly. I am a resident of Earl Township, and I understand why Earl Township would pass that resolution because we are the best represented township in the district. And when I was on the committee, my goal was to be fair. And when I was on the committee, my goal was to be fair, and I still think that we need to reorganize so we become equal distribution. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, back to item 16, the announcements of upcoming meetings. Please listen closely, because some of the meetings have changed as they were published, and they have changed. On July 23rd, the Board of Directors is having a special meeting here at the Education Center at 7:00. That meeting will be to appoint our new superintendent, whom you met earlier this evening, Dr. Baver. Following that meeting, this is the change, following the meeting, at approximately 7:30, we will have a Facilities Committee meeting here in the Education Center in the boardroom. That was originally advertised at 5:30. It is now at 7:30. Please note that. July 30th, we are going to have a Policy Review Committee meeting here in the boardroom at 6:00. That's also a change. I believe that had been previously scheduled for next week, so it's the following week. August 20th, we have two meetings, three meetings. First, we have a Facilities Committee meeting, and all of these meetings are here at the Education Center. The Facilities Committee meeting is in Conference Room A at 5:30. Following that, we'll have a Personnel Committee meeting in Conference Room A at 6:30. And then, we'll come here to the boardroom and have our official School Board of Directors meeting at 7:00. Before I call for adjournment, I'd like to announce that the board will be going into executive session to talk about personnel issues, and we will not be returning back for any additional meeting time. So at the motion to adjourn, we are finished for the evening, except for the board. And Mrs. Deroe, who makes a motion to adjourn the meeting. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for your attendance. Have a good remainder of your meeting, or your evening.